That that business is taken care of, I would ask for a motion to adjourn so that way we can then enter our city council meeting.
I'm second.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Washington, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, may please do the roll call to vote to adjourn to enter our council meeting.
Shob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Okay, Board of Equalization stands adjourned and we are now going to move into our Lincoln City Council meeting of Monday, November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Same thing as earlier, in accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Then applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition to that item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. And before we go into our council meeting, I just want to say on behalf of Commissioner Kristi Yoakam, we have some graduates of the My City Academy program. It's an eight-week program for new Americans to learn more about local government and to become more involved and active. So thank you so much for coming and taking part of this program. Thank you so much. All right, will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business for our council agenda today is a announcement. Due to the Thanksgiving Day holiday, city council will not meet on Monday, November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. The first part of our agenda is our consent agenda, sections one and two.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on any of these items for item, uh, items one or two on our agenda? Any staff that want to share any information on items one or two? Okay, going once, going twice. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, please.
We cannot vote on our items. Item one A is reappointing Shirley Mora James and Michael Q Thompson to the City Police Advisory Board for terms to expire November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis, any discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
Raybold.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one B is approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on short-term investments of idle funds during the month ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one C is resolution setting the hearing date of Monday, December twentieth, two thousand twenty-one at five thirty P M. for the assessment of weed abatement costs incurred by the City of Lincoln for a period of November first, two thousand twenty through October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
Ward.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item two A and two B was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, may please call the roll.
Beckyus.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Our next section on our agenda is a section four, public hearing liquor resolutions. Item four A, application request of J.J. Hooligans LLC doing business as J.J. Hooligans for a change in location in their existing Class C liquor license from three eleven North Eighth Street, Suite One to eight two six P Street.
Hang on one second, Councilman Washington, you're recognized.
Uh, Madam Clerk, um, I think you missed two B, uh, another hearing date to be set.
Oh, I called items two A and two B together.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I missed that one, thank you.
All right, so we are item, on item four A. Um, is there anyone here, uh, is the applicant here that would like to speak on their application?
Good evening, Jason Ortmeier, thirty-four oh one North Seventy-Fourth Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five oh seven. Here on behalf of J.J. Hooligans, uh, for our application to move our liquor license from three eleven North Eighth Street, Suite One to eight twenty-six P Street.
Are there any questions for, from the council at this time? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on item four A? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item.
I'll be calling items four A, four B, excuse me, four B and four C together. Application of Dami Dami LLC doing business as Dami Dami for a Class I liquor license located at one two eight North Thirteenth Street, Suite One four four. And the related manager application of Andrew M. Lane.
Is the applicant here?
Uh, Andrew M. Lane, resident of four five two zero Bancroft Avenue, Unit Three, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five zero six. Here speaking today on behalf of Dami Dami LLC, doing business as Dami Dami located at one two eight North Thirteenth Street, Suite One forty-four, Lincoln, Nebraska, zip code six eight five zero eight.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Okay, thank you so much for coming down. Is there any, is there anyone else here that would like to speak on items four B or four C? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
I'll be calling items four D and four E together. Application of Chipotle Mexican Grill Inc., doing business as Chipotle Mexican Grill number two two six dash three seven six nine for a Class I liquor license located at seven one three three Pioneer's Boulevard. And the related manager application of Brian Hexill.
Is the applicant here that would like to speak on their application? Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions for the council, from the council at this time for investigator? Okay, seeing none, Councilman Shob.
Ma'am, Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, seeing no one else coming forward to talk about these agenda items, I'd like to move approval on items four A through four E.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Shob, seconded by Councilwoman Washington, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, may please call the roll.
Shob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Our next section on our agenda is section five, public hearing resolutions. I'll be calling items five A and five B together. Item five A is adopting Lincoln Electric System annual budget for two thousand twenty-two to become effective January first, two thousand twenty-two. And the related, item five B, adopting Lincoln Electric System rate schedules to become effective January first, two thousand twenty-two.
Good evening, Chair, Bowers, and members of the city council. I'm Kevin Wales, CEO of the Lincoln Electric System, ninety-four forty-five Rookabye Road, six eight five two six. And have Emily Koenig with me, who is our new chief financial officer. Many of you know Emily, but just background, she has twenty-three years with L A S. She's been in the position now seven months since Laura left us. Um, and she was serving as the CFO of both Nucorp and of the D E C, District Energy Corporation, at the same time that she took this role. So she has a lot of experience and she's been responsible for the budget for a number of years, so now she gets to present it to you, so.
Thank you, Kevin. It's nice to be with you this evening. Um, as Kevin mentioned, we're going to give you an overview of the proposed two thousand twenty-two budget and rates. Um, feel free to stop me as we go through it, um, I'll have time for questions at the end. So just to, um, can you see my slides? I just want to make sure that they flip those over to the, okay, perfect. Um, so just a quick overview of the information we're going to cover. This is really a positive, uh, story this year. It's been since two thousand seventeen that L A S has had a rate increase. And in fact, this year we're proposing a rate decrease. Um, it's about, uh, just under one percent system-wide rate decrease. We also, as we pulled the budget together, we're very mindful of the financial metrics that are important to L A S. And this budget achieves the targets or exceeds them for all of those financial metrics. The primary driver for our ability to have a rate decrease is related to our net power cost being lower for two thousand twenty-two as compared to two thousand twenty-one. And then finally, our capital budget is expected to be lower as well by about twelve million. So as you know, um, the L A S budget authorization has two components, the operating budget and the capital budget. The operating budget is, um, for the day-to-day operations of the utility. We're forecasting that to be about six million lower than two thousand twenty-one. Uh, the capital budget for kind of the construction of infrastructure for our system is about twelve million lower, as I mentioned. So that results in the total authorization being about eighteen million lower for two thousand twenty-two as compared to two thousand twenty-one. One thing I did want to note while on this slide is the two thousand twenty-one budget authorization of nearly three hundred and twelve million there. We expect that we will exceed that this year. As you are probably aware, in February, we had a winter storm that, um, created additional power costs for the system. But because of our participation in the Southwest Power Pool integrated market, we have offsetting revenues, uh, that come in for, to offset some of those increased expenses and in fact exceeded those increased expenses. And for that reason, it's not necessary for us to come forward with a budget amendment because we have offsetting revenue. So I just wanted to note that while we're here on this slide, because it'll be the kind of last time that you see the total, um, two thousand twenty-one budget amount. So looking at our capital budget, um, as I mentioned, it's forty-six point two million. It's about twelve million lower than two thousand twenty-one. Really, we're kind of getting in a period of kind of steady-state capital expenditures for the system. We recently completed the construction of our, um, L A S Operations Center in southeast Lincoln. And for that reason, we have decreased expenditures in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the largest component of the capital budget is for underground distribution. I did want to note too that about two point two million of that amount is for discretionary underground projects. So when we go through the town, look for, you know, our, on arterial roadways areas that we can take the overhead lines to underground. Um, we do that every year, we have a discretionary pool of money in the budget. Our next largest category is for power supply at seven point four million. That's associated with generation-type projects, um, capital projects. And really, the remainder of the categories are just at or below five million. And there's many, many projects that make up those, just to, um, kind of the routine type of projects for the system. And I did want to mention too on that, all of the capital projects have been included and reviewed in the C I P as well that are included in our budget. So moving over to the operating budget, we frequently show this pie chart, kind of the allocation of costs for the operating budget. Power cost continues to be, uh, the biggest part of that at fifty-three percent, um, or a hundred and thirty-two point eight million. That's for the cost to generate and purchase power, um, through our obligations at the S P P market. The next largest category is payroll and benefits at fifty-two point four million or twenty-one percent. That is essentially unchanged from two thousand twenty-one. Next largest is depreciation at thirty-three point seven million. That's a non-cash item, but it is included at our operating authorization. And then the next category, really, other operations, twenty-six point three million. That's for everything other than power costs to keep the system running. Um, a couple notable projects in that category, we're really putting some emphasis on physical and cybersecurity efforts. We've got, um, a security operations center that will be twenty-four seven monitoring of cameras and alarms and, and our infrastructure as we continue to see, you know, kind of suspicious events around that infrastructure, which is critical in nature to provide service to the community. As well as, um, increased efforts in cybersecurity, that's another area, I'm sure you hear about the, you know, cybersecurity issues. And particularly with the, um, industry we are in, it's important that we have, um, a robust system there. So we have multi-factor authentication and, um, firewall upgrades and those sorts of things included in that budget as well. But moving on to the largest part of the budget, so this, it's a little bit easier for us to talk about power cost if we, um, include the revenues that we get from our participation in the market. Um, only at the expense side of it, the purchased power, the produced power is included in the budget authorization. But because we're part of a market, um, in that we generate and sell our power into the market and then buy for our load, um, we get revenues for what we sell into the market. So in order to get the complete picture of what's going on for power cost, it's good to look at all three of these components. And so this slide shows that, um, we're projecting to be six point four million lower in two thousand twenty-two as compared to two thousand twenty-one. Really, that's a result of lower fixed costs at some of our generating resources, Larry River Station, Walter Scott Four, as well as increased wholesale revenues due to higher generation output as well as increased market prices. So we do like to highlight a few of the ways that L A S's, um, customers support energy efficiency, um, initiatives in the community and also assisting those customers who may have trouble paying their bill. Um, I'm sure you're familiar with the Sustainable Energy Program. We've included one point five million in the two thousand twenty-two budget for this program. Um, the two thousand twenty-one funding was one point two five million. But in September, our Budget and Rates Committee of the Board actually reallocated two hundred and fifty thousand of unspent monies from another area of our budget to this program. Because due to some large lighting projects earlier in the year, it looked that, like, demand was going to outpace, um, the funding that we had for that program. So this will have the budget set at about what we expect to spend this year. I think it's interesting to note too, since two thousand nine, the beginning of this, um, program, there's been twenty-nine million that's been, um, provided to the community for energy efficiency projects. That's reduced, uh, the demand on our system by thirty megawatts, which is the equivalent of seven thousand five hundred average homes. So that's pretty significant because we're always trying to reduce demand on the system. When looking at the Energy Assistance Program, that's provided via, uh, resolution by the L A S Board um, to assist those customers who may struggle to pay their bill. It's based on a formula that includes how many customers we have as well as, um, what the rates are. And so this funding is only going up five thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-two because we're not proposing a rate increase. But we do have some growth in customer base. Um, this program, since it started in two thousand five, has provided four point seven million, um, for the community for customer assistance. And I also wanted to note that in two thousand twenty, due to the COVID pandemic, the L A S Board authorized additional funding for that program of an amount over eight hundred thousand. So while not part of the budget authorization, it's good to know how we're going to pay for these things. Um, so this slide shows an overview of the revenue that we expect for two thousand twenty-two as compared to two thousand twenty-one. Retail revenue is essentially flat, it's down just five hundred thousand. That's a combination of increased revenue from growth in the system, offset by the rate decrease that I mentioned. And I'm going to go over that in a little bit, um, on a couple slides. Wholesale revenue is up four point five million, which I mentioned when I talked about net power cost. Other miscellaneous revenue of just, um, under two million, that's due to the renewable energy certificates program that L A S, um, has, which allows customers to purchase certificates so that they can either say that part or all of their, um, consumption is provided by renewable energy. The certificate pricing is based on market, the pricing for that is going up, so we'll see some additional revenue for that in two thousand twenty-two. And then finally, I'm sure you're familiar with the city dividend for utility ownership. That's increasing our revenues in two thousand twenty-two. Last year, the cap was removed from that calculation and that was phased in over two years, that increase. And so this is the second year, um, of the increase in that, um, passed through to the city. So I mentioned financial metrics when I started. Um, there's several that we monitor closely as we're pulling the budget together in order to ensure the financial health of the system as well as the system maintaining our double A bond rating. Our debt service coverage is a primary one that we monitor. That's a measurement of how many times over we could pay our bond principal and interest payments after paying operating expenses. Um, a higher number is better in this case and we target to be at two times coverage or higher. This budget is two fifteen coverage. Um, next is our net debt ratio. This one is a measurement of how leveraged the system is. So essentially, how many years would it take to pay off all of the debt obligations of the system with all available funds and holding operations constant? A lower number is better in this case. And when we benchmark against our peers of similarly rated and structured utilities, we're lower than that, so that's good. Another metric that's come to be quite important to us is our fixed charge coverage. This is similar to debt service coverage, but it rolls in other fixed obligations of the system. So not just long-term debt, short-term interest, um, the city dividend payment, um, purchase power agreement payments. Those things that are, are fixed in nature for the system. And Standard and Poor's, who rates L A S's debt, has drawn a bright line at one point four times coverage and basically said that you have to have something at or better than that, higher than that, to maintain your double A rating. So this budget does that at one forty-eight. Um, next up, we have our cash on hand, how much liquidity is needed for the system. We do an annual liquidity study, which is both operational and risk-based, um, to der- determine how much cash we should have at any one month, at month-end, which is eighty-eight days. This budget exceeds that at a hundred and eighty days at year-end for two thousand twenty-two. And then finally, our rate stabilization fund, the target for that is also developed through our liquidity study. Um, the minimum target for that is twenty-nine point eight million. This budget is at thirty-seven point two. It's above that, but it's important to note that there's some monies in that fund that are set aside for special purpose. In two thousand eighteen, we had excess S C P monies available at the end of the year. Our board set that aside for low-income projects, that was one point three five million. And then secondly, we had settlements from a Burlington Northern, um, Santa Fe settlement in twenty fifteen of four point seven million that are also contained in that fund and intended for energy efficiency projects. And there's no financings, um, or use or contributions to the rate stabilization fund included in the budget. So that kind of wraps up the budget side of it. Um, once we pull that together, we kind of move to rate design. How are we going to, um, pay for the budget? And so a few things to note about that, we set our rates based on cost of service. So each class, um, of customer, we target rates being plus or minus five percent of the cost to serve that customer. So ninety-five to a hundred and five percent cost of service. The other thing to, just as a reminder, some of you are probably familiar with this, but a few years back, we implemented a rate restructuring process. The, the need for that was the way that we were collecting, uh, revenue as opposed to how we're incurring costs for the system. And so there's a, there's a, most of our costs are fixed in nature. It doesn't really matter how much energy someone uses, but we still have the cost of the steel on the ground, transmission, substation, distribution, generation assets, regardless generally of how much energy is used. The problem is that we were can, collecting revenues for those fixed costs in a variable charge. So depending on how much energy, for instance, a residential customer would use, um, we may or may not collect all the revenues we need for the health of the system, financial health of the system. So we started this process in two thousand seventeen, implemented phase one, which was moving the recovery of substation and tr- or distribution costs into a fixed charge on the bill. We concluded phase one in two thousand nineteen and now we're starting phase two. So a little history before I show you this next slide. So phase two is moving the collection of transmission costs into the fixed component of the bill. This slide here shows the different charges that could be on a residential bill, um, for two thousand twenty-one and then what we're proposing for two thousand twenty-two. So for instance, the customer charge, no change in that, five dollars per month that collects for, um, meter reading, customer, call center, those sorts of costs. But you will see that the energy charges are projected to decrease. The summer energy charge by, um, almost a cent, the winter energy charge by just a fraction of the cent. But that allows us to, in a revenue-neutral fashion, have increases in the fixed component of the bill. So back in two thousand seventeen, we implemented these facilities levels for residential customers. We did it in a tiered structure, it's based on average monthly usage so that we would also still be incentivizing energy conservation. And so you can make changes in your home or your behavior and you can, um, potentially move to lower level, save quite a bit on your bill because we didn't want to forget that part about we want people to use less energy. But because of those reductions in the energy charges, we're able to have increases in the facilities levels of two dollars, three fifty, six fifty, and for three-phase, six fifty as well. I'll show you on the next slide kind of what that means in a bill. So this depicts for each facility's level, one, two, and three, a low user and a high user in those bands. And what these proposed changes would mean in their bill. So if you're in the low end of each facility's level, you generally see an increase in your bill. That's because the fixed charge is going up and you don't use quite enough energy to offset that with a reduction in the energy charge. The reverse is true, if you're in the upper end, you get a higher, um, fixed charge, but because you use more energy, you're able to offset that with, um, your energy reduction. One thing to note that we like about this structure too is it provides additional bill stability for our customers, particularly low-use customers, which sometimes end up being low-income as well. Um, for instance, in the February event, if you use a lot of energy, but a larger portion of your bill is fixed, you have a little bit more certainty in what your bill will be as compared to if most of the bill is set on a variable charge. So that's just one added benefit of this structure. One thing to note too, since two thousand seventeen, when we started rate restructuring, um, the average customer has seen about a five-dollar plus or minus change in their bill since two thousand seventeen. Not annually, but since six years ago from this process. But it's made a huge difference in the ability for L A S to collect its costs appropriately. This is just one more visualization of these changes that we're proposing. So across the Y-axis, there is the number of counts and the X-axis is the annual bill change that a customer can expect from rate restructuring and the changes we're proposing. And as you can see, it's about ninety percent of our customers will see annual changes that are less than twenty dollars. Some will be saving twenty dollars, some will be having twenty dollars higher bill. Okay, similar changes for our general service demand class. This is, um, a class that's like mid-sized restaurants, businesses. Um, because we haven't had a rate change since two thousand seventeen, it becomes important to work on continued alignment of fixed cost recovery and a fixed charge, variable and a variable charge. So these changes are also revenue-neutral, similar in nature, reductions in energy, increases in facilities. And, um, another distribution chart there, but you can see that these customers, uh, hover right around plus or minus one hundred dollars annual bill change. And they're larger customers, so they have larger bills. Okay, that concludes the revenue-neutral changes. Now we're getting into the rate reductions. So for our large light and power and large power contract customers, when we pulled the budget together and looked at the rates, um, I mentioned to you earlier that we target plus or minus five percent cost of service. When we pulled this together, this class was at a hundred and twenty percent cost of service, meaning we're collecting too much revenue from them. We felt that wasn't right. We wanted to, uh, implement a rate reduction. And so the changes that we're proposing here for the energy and demand charges result in this class being at about a hundred and fifteen percent cost of service. You might ask yourself, well, why didn't you just go all the way down to your target of a hundred and five? But we can see from our, um, financial forecast that the next couple of years, we have some increased power and transmission costs. And if everything stays the same and we don't make any other changes, this class would be at a hundred and six percent cost of service in two years. And so part of the rate design is also, um, limiting volatility in rates. And so this is kind of having a smoothing effect that the costs will eventually catch up with these rates. And overall, it's about a three and a half percent reduction for this class. It's under one percent as you look at the system for a whole, but for this class, it's about a three, three point five percent reduction. This is the same distribution chart, all of these are reductions. You can see some of our large customers will see reductions over ten thousand dollars a year. Um, and it's about a two and a half million dollar reduction for L A S for revenue. And finally, we do have some rate increases. This is related to the streetlight system. We've been working with the city over the last several years, particularly as the L E D light conversion, um, project was wrapping up, to ensure that we're collecting the right amount for maintenance of the streetlight system. Currently, with the changes we're proposing, we're going to be at sixty-three percent cost of service, which is quite a bit below our target. So we've shared a plan with the city, um, that we would be increasing maintenance rates about ten percent each year until we are within plus or minus five percent cost of service. The energy charges for the streetlight system are spot-on, they're about a hundred percent. In fact, the city has seen significant reductions in energy costs, um, since the implementation of the L E D streetlights. It's just the maintenance rates need to be adjusted a little bit to align those cost recovery with the cost for maintaining the lights. So the, um, bill change for the entire class is about a hundred and fifty-four thousand. The city is ninety-five percent of that class. We do have a few other customers in there, so we need to continue to structure our rates appropriately. But when you look at the change for the city and they are also benefited from the reductions that I just mentioned for the large power class, um, their net impact is about forty-six thousand dollar increase. So they got about a hundred thousand dollar reduction, offset with an increase from the streetlights. So I'm almost done here. We're, um, we use a lot of different communication channels to try and get the message out about our budget. We use a lot of different communication channels to try and get the message out about our budget and rates. Admittedly, it's been a bit quiet this year. I think that's because we're having a rate reduction that we're proposing. Some of the different channels are noted there, as well as some meetings that we've had, a business advisory council meeting that we've hosted, a public meeting that we had a virtual format. We had three customers attend that. Our key account reps have reached out to their accounts. We've received 100% positive feedback from that group. Our call center takes calls. We've sent emails to Leba, the Chamber of Commerce, Employers Coalition, Lincoln Journal Star. All of those have said, thanks, great information, don't need to meet with you at this time. I'm sure they've got other things on their plate. You know, a rate reduction isn't something necessarily that they want to talk about, but we've tried to get the message out as best we could to our customer base. So just wrapping up here, there's two resolutions for your consideration on December 6th. The first one is the operating and budget resolution, operating capital budget resolution. As I noted, it's 293.9 million, about 6% lower than last year. That resolution includes adopting the budget. It also provides LAS the ability to reimburse itself for capital expenditures with the future issuance of bonds. That's in there every year. We're required to do that if we need to issue bonds. And then also provides continued eminent domain authority, which is also always in that resolution. And then finally, the second resolution is for our retail rates, just adopting all those rate changes I noted, the revenue-neutral changes for residential and general service demand, rate decreases for our large customers, streetlight maintenance increases. We added one new class for off-peak daily rate, and then minor clarifying changes to the wording as we go through the year. Sometimes we identify that we could be a little bit more clear in our rate schedules, and so we provided the redline schedule to you in your packet. But that concludes my spiel, so I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Councilwoman Rebel?
Thank you for coming. I just have one question concerning the streetlight maintenance increase in the rates. You know, I think we had the expectation that with the conversion to LED, we would see a reduction in the energy costs, but also on the maintenance side, since LED lamps last longer, ballasts last longer, so that there wouldn't be those maintenance costs. Can you tell us a little bit more about what you're seeing with the maintenance cost increases?
Yep. So it's great to see the reduction on the energy side, for sure. I mean, that's about 600,000 this year as compared to two years ago. But the maintenance activities associated with streetlights, about 80% of that is with the pole. And so these new lights were placed on the existing poles, and so that maintenance continues. You know, painting of poles, inspection, those sorts of things. And so the way that the rates are structured, kind of an industry norm, is based on the average useful life of the lamp, but, and the LEDs have a longer life, so their rate was smaller, if that makes sense. But now, when a wholesale change of the system has been made, you're still trying to recover nearly the same amount of costs, and so those rates need to come up. We really have yet to see much reduction in the maintenance costs because of the, most of it being in the pole, if that makes sense, and some of the, and cable locating and those sorts of things that are not necessarily directly related to the lamp itself.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council at this time? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. How do we bring the cost down on maintenance on the poles?
Well, one of the challenges with it is, of course, the age of the poles themselves. So one of the things we're trying to do is we have increased the type of inspection processes we have with those poles, but quite honestly, it's like a lot of aging infrastructure. When you have aging infrastructure, whether it's our wooden poles the power lines are on, whether it's the cables in the ground that we have programs to change out, there's just, there is maintenance associated with that infrastructure. So it's going to be a challenge. I think one of the things for us is, once we get more information and more experience with the LED lamps themselves and the fixtures, there's probably going to be some adjustments as we go forward in how we look at those, but we don't know that yet for sure, because we don't have that experience. But as far as the poles themselves, that's a challenge, and as well as, this also includes conductor serving them. So it's not just the pole, but it's lines serving them. And then that was one of the things that came up, of course, was we actually had refined our processes a little bit and better basically identified some of the costs. For a long time, actually until recently, we were not doing any charging for locating associated with streetlights. So there's a lot of things about the infrastructure the city owns that we actually weren't recovering the cost at all. So it's kind of an adjustment process that we hope to get more information, but we're aggressively trying to make sure that we look at the poles, because they're a liability issue, obviously, if they fail.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes, great news, though. I mean, we're lowering the budget and lowering the rates, and this is something that I've always would have loved to see throughout for the last five years. A couple of quick questions. When it comes down to the city dividend, that's an increase, it looks like, of 1.3 million. Is that correct? If we go back 20...
1.3, 1.7, yep.
1.3 million, and that, all that money that's collected, is that budgeted through you, or has that come out of your operating budget? Or is that collected from the ratepayers, I believe?
It's collected from the ratepayers. It's a separate line item on the bill, so it's a straight pass-through. So although it is increased revenue, we have an increase in the expense as well. So those offset each other. But it does, interestingly enough, impact some of our financial metrics, so we do kind of take it into consideration in some of those calculations, particularly the fixed charge coverage that I mentioned.
Okay. And it looks like it, just my rough math, it's over a 10% increase to all the ratepayers, correct? That the city is going to collect an extra 10%?
Just for the dividend.
On their dividend, an extra 10%. Does that mean our bill, our average ratepayers' bill is going to stay level or go down, or will it go up because of the city dividend?
So because the rate reduction is mainly in our larger customer rate classes, most customers saw a bill change. That was effective September 1. Actually, it's on a different cycle slightly than this process, but they've already seen that increase, residential customers, in their bill.
So the residential customers will see an increase because of the city dividend, not because of LAS operations or ratepaying?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate the comments on the rate decrease. We haven't had an overall rate increase in five years, so...
Great job.
I was pleased my first year we get to have a rate decrease.
How long have you been here?
23 years. It took a while. I'm kidding.
Any other questions from the council at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Item 5C is accepting the air quality program grant work plan for the 2022-2023 federal fiscal years.
Is there anyone here from the city that would like to provide information?
Members of the council, my name is Scott Holmes. I manage the Environmental Health Division with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. My apologies for being a second late. I thought other people might want to testify on a budget. What you have before you is a standard work plan that we update every two years with the Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy. This work plan prescribes our role with air quality that is not part of our federal EPA operating permits program, and it includes sections in it about compliance, inspections, air monitoring, emissions inventories. It's a very comprehensive work plan, and that's because the authority that we have to do this work is delegated from NDEE to us, and is delegated from the federal government to the state. And so we're in essence operating a federal program at the local level, and that allows us then to work very closely with our regulated sources and assist them in gaining compliance and staying in compliance. And that is what you have before you. The Department of Environmental Quality pays us $97,000 per year for this particular program, and we are required to match that at 40% through local dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, please.
I'll be calling item 5D, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 21020, application of the Urban Development Director to review us to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan and to approve a proposed amendment to the North 56th Street and Arbor Road redevelopment plan to add the Central Lumber Sales Redevelopment Project to include construction of 122,500-square-foot distribution facility on property generally located at North 62nd Street and Arbor Road.
Good evening, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. What you have before you is a plan amendment on the redevelopment plan up on Arbor Road. And just as a cleanup, there is a motion to amend. This is a clerical cleanup that is motion amended, it's not a substantive change. Central Lumber is consolidating some of their operations, and they're moving. They're currently at Fourth and A Street, and they need a little more elbow room, so I think this is a good plan to be able to move and transfer them to an area that's more suited for their business activity. It's a 15-year TIF project, it's not a 20-year TIF project. This item has gone before the Planning Commission. It went there on October 13th. It received a 5 to nothing vote in support. After Planning Commission, they went to the Urban Design Committee. Urban Design gave them approval. Yet to be brought before this body is an annexation agreement, because this area lies just outside the city limits, and they've been working with the Planning Department on that. And also, a redevelopment agreement needs to be brought before this body as well. We expect those to, we're trying to get those done so that they could wind up here before the end of the year. It's possible it could happen into the next year, but our goal is to try to wrap this up before the end of the year. The current assessed valuation of the property that they're moving on to is $61,000. It's quite low. Their investment's going to be over $14 million, so this is a considerable increase in the valuation of that area. Representatives of Central Lumber are here, along with their attorney, Danae Kalkowski, and I think they'd like to have a few minutes to talk, but I'll stop there and answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions for Dr. Marvin? Okay, seeing none. Thanks so much.
Danae Kalkowski appearing tonight on behalf of the Redeveloper. Also with me tonight is Jim Geisler, President of Central Lumber, and I'd like to go ahead. We're obviously here in support of the project, but I'd like to let Jim talk to you a little bit about it, because I think it's a great example of how, you know, redevelopment and TIF funds can be used to help an existing business in Lincoln grow.
Hi, thanks for having us. Central Lumber's been in Lincoln since 1917. We were originally located at 17th and Byne, near the university. In 1967, we moved out to Fourth and A Street. That was outside of the city, I think, at the time. And we are a wholesale distributor of building materials. We distribute to retail lumberyards in Kansas, Iowa, South Dakota. And we, in 1999, we became an ESOP, and we were family-owned up until then. And let's see, what else do I have in my notes? Currently employ about 43 people in Omaha, Murdoch, and across Lincoln. We've got 10 buildings, six facilities, and we really do need some elbow room. So we're currently on about four acres, and this is about 17 acres. And we just need to become more efficient to be more relevant in the distribution business. And that's about what we do.
Okay. And we're working with Urban Development, obviously, on the redevelopment agreement, so all the details will be coming for you here in the not-too-distant future, but we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you very much, and thank you. Do you envision hiring more people in Lincoln, Nebraska as you consolidate?
We continue to grow. We've been growing pretty rapidly, so yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council this time? Did everything get hammered out? Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, please.
Item 5E is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 21023, application of the Urban Development Director to review us to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan and to approve a proposed amendment to the West O Redevelopment Plan to add the Instincts Redevelopment Project Center of Excellence for construction of an approximately 250,000-square-foot production facility, warehouse and office building on property generally located west of southwest 32nd Street and on the south of west O Street.
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. I think this is a really exciting project that we have before us, and what this is is an expansion. What was, the newspaper published expansion number is $180 million. That's a lot of equipment. The tax increment financing isn't provided for on the equipment side, but there is a significant amount of tax financing involved with this. But this is a substantial investment in the community of Lincoln. It's not only an investment in dollars, the number of employees that are currently employed within Instinct are about 100. This would increase that number by another 120 employees, so a substantial increase in the number of employees. This project went before Planning Commission on October 27th. It received an 8 to nothing vote. There was no one that spoke in opposition to the project, but one man did come up and talk about apprenticeships for construction projects and was an advocate for that type of arrangement. The interesting fact that I learned from this is that they operate in a variety of different areas currently within Lincoln, so not only are they going to add additional employees, but they'll consolidate on one location on West O. And I probably got my facts wrong, but the product that they create travels about 30 miles around the city of Lincoln before it's finalized, and by doing it all in one location, it will be, make things much more efficient in terms of their processes, and would be easier on Lincoln streets as well. They have facilities at 6501 Cornhusker, and they have facilities at 6200 North 56th Street, along with the facility on West O. The design is scheduled to go before Urban Design later in December, and here today I know is Andrew Willis, who's a representative of Nature's Variety, and I believe there may be others that would be willing to speak. I'll stop there and answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Dr. Marvin at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street, on behalf of Nature's Variety, now known as Instinct. As Director Marvin pointed out, yeah, this is really a consolidation of operations from a couple of different locations and a major expansion. So it's an additional 250,000-square-foot building and then consolidating the operations. Again, it's, what it does is retains 100 employees that currently are in Lincoln and is proposed to add about another 120. This is really a, it's a manufacturing food production facility, but what Instinct makes is raw pet food, so it's, even though it's manufacturing, it's, there's no cooking, no fermenting, non-odorous, no real minimal noises, so it's about the best neighbor of an industrial building, and it's, and they're just, you know, they need this much room for expansion. This type of product is growing, and the need for the product is growing. As already mentioned, one of the things this does is by consolidating all the operations is it's going to relieve a lot of the truck traffic across town, going from 56th Street to this location and back and forth. It happens to get the product just internally ready to go. Another thing, this will be LEED-certified. It will be, there are less than 10 LEED-certified pet food manufacturing facilities in the United States. This will be one of less than 10, which is a, you know, kind of a neat thing that we'll see from this product, but that's important to Instinct, and that's going to be one of the key features of this. As mentioned already, I mean, this is, it's about $180 million total investment, but again, that's, that's a lot of, lots of, a lot of the equipment and everything that's needed. But it really, you know, this is, this is going to be a pretty, pretty significant positive impact, both on this, both on the company and on the city. So you've already seen the change of zone, that's been approved. The preliminary plat was approved by Planning Commission last week, so we're getting everything really lined up. We'll go to urban development, urban design, December 7th, I believe it is, and then hopefully We'll go to Urban Development, Urban Design, December 7th, I believe it is, and then hopefully come back with a redevelopment agreement here. So again, everything is, is, is getting lined up and moving, and, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this project.
Are there any questions at this time? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Item 5F, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 21024. Application of Urban Development Director to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan and to approve a proposed amendment to the Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan to add the Antelope Square Apartments Redevelopment Project for a 152-unit multifamily housing project on property generally located north of P Street between 22nd and 23rd Streets.
Good evening, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. This is a project that I think the council is well aware of what's going on. I don't know if I want to go into a lot of the detail, but I did put up on here the plan area. The project would build 152 multifamily apartments. 10% of the, of the units would be affordable through a grant that they received from the state of Nebraska. The plan area is broader than just the site, so the location of the apartments would be right here, and we've elected to create a more involved plan area. And I was heartened to hear some of the neighbors come down and say, "We would like to have some bike lanes. We want to be able to create connectivity if you're going to put something here." Well, Ernie Castillo, who drafted the area, I think can be complimented for his efforts to be pressing in that, because we think that there are opportunities to create ingress and egress for pedestrians from the existing neighborhood over into the park area, which is really our goal. Not only that, the city's bicycle trail map itself does show trail connections that run this area. The trail connectors, connections are actually longer than what's represented here, but there is, this particular, that trail connector would run over multiple redevelopment plan areas, so we're just amending one plan area, which would be the Antelope Valley Plan, which does allow us to plan for trails or bicycle connections into the park this way. We also included parts of Trago Park because we had conversations with Lynn Johnson. Some of the park itself gets congested with parking, and he's looked for maybe diagonal parking on-street in certain areas near the Spray Park, and we'd like to be able to pursue that. So this particular outlined area will allow the tax increment financing off of this project to do some of our priority, priority goals from this particular development, and that's what we would expect to be included in the sources and uses that would be coming towards you. On October 27th, this was before Planning Commission, it received an eight-to-nothing vote. I think Brett was going to be here, but I think he's been interrupted and hasn't been able to make the meeting, so I can stop there and answer questions if you have any.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none.
Good evening, members of the city council. Danae Kalkowski, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 105. I forgot to give my address last time. Representing the redeveloper on this project, I know you, as Dan mentioned, you're pretty familiar with this project. Brett's been up here representing it through the land use process, and now we're into the redevelopment components. Dan said the redevelopment agreement, or redevelopment plan's pretty explanatory. We're working through details of the redevelopment agreement as we speak and are hopeful to be bringing that before you here, maybe for approval yet before the end of the year. So just so you know what's coming, we'll be ironing out all the details in that agreement, but I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the redevelopment project if you have any.
Councilwoman Raven?
Thank you, Danae. In a redevelopment agreement, is it common to codify or put in writing the developer's commitment to 10% of the units?
Yes, that will be in the redevelopment agreement.
Terrific, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair, members of the council, thank you. My name's Eric Foster, I live at 1920 J Street, number seven. I am a bicycle rider in, in and around downtown quite a lot, and I'm glad Mr. Marvin brought that up as far as the bike lanes. P and Q are difficult areas to traverse, other than being on the sidewalk or on Q Street or P Street. It's, it's, it's a great area for bike lanes, if that's what I heard from him. I believe that that would help, it would certainly help me. Q and P are wide streets. I would think that there's areas for, for bike lanes to be built. I've seen them built in areas that are a lot narrower than that, so I just, my simple message is, I would be a huge proponent and supporter of that, and it's a great place for those, because there's a lot of pedestrians, a lot of bicycle riders. So that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much for coming down. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. Councilwoman Guinness, will you grab Councilman, uh, Beckus? Thanks again for coming down. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Item 5G is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21002, requesting a planning director for the adoption of Plan Forward 2050, the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan.
Good evening, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. I also have Paul Barnes, our long-range planning manager, available to us tonight for this item. I'm very pleased to be before you this evening to present to you for your consideration in action, the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, also known as Plan Forward. This plan is before you after over two years of process and work that went into this, and we worked with a community committee, a staff committee, equity subcommittee, and we had tremendous input from the public and different stakeholders throughout the process. We're very pleased with, with that work. I do want to take a moment right now to thank each of you for your involvement in this process. You were available for several different briefings and small group meetings and discussions about this, and you provided us your feedback, and that helped make this a better plan, so we very much appreciate that. I'll just go through a few brief, high-level points about this. I will not go into the top 10 again, to make sure that we don't go through that again with, with you. So really, this is first and foremost, a growth and development physical plan. That is what the comprehensive plan at its roots is for, and this, we accomplished that with this plan. So this plan does have a plan put forward to accommodate the 48,000 additional units that are going to be needed by 2050 for the city of Lincoln, as well as an additional 5,000 units or so out in the county, for the county jurisdiction. We also have a continuation of multidirectional growth that has currently been experienced in our community, is in our current 2040 plan, is carried forward in the 2050 plan, and I will note that 25% of that growth in those units are expected to be infill in nature, so, within the existing city. So there is a certain, a significant component of that, and that is to carry forward the trend that we are seeing already for that type of development. But we will see the majority of the growth will still happen on the edges of the community, and the most, majority of that will be to the east and to the south, which is also what we're currently experiencing. But it will be multidirectional in nature. I will note for the record that there have, there are 10 items that we've highlighted as we've gone forward with the community discussion about the new plan. These items are either new to the plan or have been expanded significantly, and that's complete neighborhoods. Infill and redevelopment, design standards, local food, early childhood care and education, sustainability, resiliency, parking, workforce development, and equity. So we did put a spotlight on those items as we went out to the community to discuss the new plan. I will note that we completed this process during the pandemic. Really, we just had kicked it off and then the pandemic hit, and so we had to adjust very quickly and dramatically, at the beginning especially of this process. And we learned some great lessons about how to go forward and do things differently. So one of those positives from the pandemic is that we now have a much better skillset of being able to do this type of work virtually, and so we intend to continue to do that type of work for future projects, as well as the in-person part that we historically have done as well. The public process did reach thousands of individuals throughout our community, and we feel very good about what are the results of that, between in-person meetings and events, virtual events, online surveys, email blasts, social media usage, doing more unique and innovative things like the afternoon show and the carpool karaoke, that seems like a very long time ago now, but it's something that we wanted to try to do new things to get more people aware of what was going on and involved. At the very end of the process, I will note that we had some really good success in the two months or so leading up to the Planning Commission hearing on October 27th. We delivered 18 presentations on, on the new plan, and, which reached directly about 400 individuals. So that alone felt like we accomplished a lot to get the information out to people. All of the public comments have been documented and addressed in some form. There's an Appendix A to the plan that is quite long, but it is a very good, complete summary and detailed information about how we received information from the public and how we responded to those comments. I would say that majority of comments we received are able to be answered by saying that, yes, that topic has been addressed in the plan and we showed where it was addressed. We did go to the, to the Planning Commission on October 27th, we received unanimous vote of approval of the comprehensive plan by the Planning Commission. All the testimony at that event was supportive in nature. I will also note that any additional comments that we've received since we've entered into the approval process, those will also be documented, but the current Appendix A does not have all those comments in it. We did do a briefing of the city council on November 8th. The county board hearing was last Tuesday, and so that did happen. They will take action tomorrow on the comprehensive plan. I do want to explain one item that has been brought up numerous times, especially since we approached the end of the process, and I'll put this information on the overhead here, just to have that available to you on the screens. What, what this item is, is showing you is the, the topic of the Salt Creek Resiliency Study, and I know that there have been numerous comments, both in-person meetings, and now we have received some more written comments about that. I do want to put it on the record and be very clear that the, the adoption of the comprehensive plan tonight, and the action by the county board tomorrow, will not be adopting that study, that that study is ongoing. What we have put into this plan is direct word-for-word language that's already in the Climate Action Plan, that states that we are to engage in a public engagement process to review and assess implementation of recommendations of the Salt Creek Resiliency Study per the City of Lincoln Climate Action Plan. And what's in blue here is a snapshot of the Climate Action Plan language that, that reports on this, and that first line there is verbatim what we have put into the new plan. So we are not saying anything different than what was already been adopted into the Climate Action Plan. And then, again, to be clear, we are not proposing to adopt the resiliency study with the action of the comprehensive plan. There is an ongoing process, that process still needs to be completed, that will provide public opportunity for comment and discussion, and on top of that, that plan will still come before the city council for separate action. So I want to be very clear about that. I know that there was some question about that. It was something, one of the few things that have come forward at the, at the end of the process that I wanted to make sure, we put it on the record and explain that this evening. So with that, I will avail myself and Paul to answer any questions that you might have, and then see who is here to speak about the plan.
Are there any questions for Mr. Barnes or Director Carey at this time? Okay, seeing none, thank you both so much. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item?
Good evening, council members. Bud Seinhurst, President and CEO, Lincoln Independent Business Association, 620 North 48th Street. I just wanted to touch a little bit, and we've had some conversations through contact meetings with various council members, thinking forward to the climate, or, not the Climate Action Plan, sorry, wrong plan, Comprehensive Plan, thinking, we're looking at a document thinking 30 years down the road, and really to have a more growth mindset around this plan, especially as we look at the completion of the South Beltway, and hopefully not-too-distant future, considering an East Beltway along the east side of our city. If we think back 30 years ago, and I was talking with a couple council members about this, 30 years ago, our city ended about Old Chaney Road, along 27th, 40th, 56th. There was not much growth and development past Old Chaney Road. If you think to today, that growth has gone between Yankee Hill and Sawtillo Road, and if you think from Old Chaney to Sawtillo is between three and four miles, and that South Beltway is going to be about a mile from Sawtillo Road. So I know that there's some areas where we could probably think more broadly about commercial, industrial, and residential development, moving toward that direction. I hope we're very open-minded, looking to the future for that, because as, as we can see in 30 years, it's gone almost four miles. We only got about a mile and a half or two miles to go, and I think that's going to be in less than 30 years. To be open to that in a growth mindset, because I think that's important for our city, I think it's important for development, I think it's important for business, I think it's important as you see families, as we see a new high school being built at 70th and Sawtillo, I think we're going to see a lot of demand down that direction. So I hope as we move through this process, you'll consider a really strong-minded growth mindset of what's going to happen in the future down in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for about it this time? Okay.
Sorry.
Seeing that, thanks so much. I see someone else would like to testify?
Good evening, council. My name is Rick Kruger, and I'm just speaking on my own behalf. I want to say that this is a, a good plan and that you should adopt it. I've got an idea here that I think that will make it better, and that is something that he just spoke about, and I don't, we did not talk about this, but if this can come up. Here's the, a copy of the comp plan, future land use area. This intersection right here, that's the prize. That's what we need to focus on and get out to, and, and what I want to talk to you about this right now is, this intersection of future East Beltway, South Beltway, and Highway 2 is going to be a major employment center. It'll be major commercial and industrial hub for the city of Lincoln, and we need to plan and get that into our urban environment sooner rather than later. When, if, if this plan goes to 2050, I'll be 95. Hopefully, I'll still be around, but I'd like to see something happen before then. And the reason we need to have it is we want this development all to happen in the city's jurisdiction. I don't want it to be done through a sanitary improvement district or any other thing. I think it needs to be in the city of Lincoln. So what I did in, in coming up to this meeting is I, I got through my old files, and back in December 4, or I'm sorry, December 2 of 2004, the city Public Works Department developed a plan for the sewer system that comes all the way down to Stevens Creek, which feeds this area, feeds both sides of the highway. And I'll just put this chart up here. Here you can see they had it in different phases, and, and they said it's dynamic in nature, and the demand for service in the basin, and the availability of the funds, and that's what I want to talk about right now. So this is almost 17 years ago that we've been looking at this thing, and according to this, the accelerated plan was to be finished in 2013. Now, of course, that's already a few years ago. And they, they must have done quite a, quite a bit, bit of work on this, because they have all the, the stations laid out, they have all the sizing laid out, and they have, well, I don't have it here with me, but they did enough engineering so they know the route and how, how it can lay in there. So knowing about this, I said to myself, okay, from public sources, what can I find out about city wastewater? So I went over to Bennett Martin Library last week, and I got the city's, what they called- call the CAFR reports. I don't know if you're familiar about those, but they're kind of interesting. I think it's a consolidated annual city report or something like that. Anyway, what I found out is that in the wastewater, for over 10 years, the funds available to be used for these kinds of bonding projects has grown 68% over 10 years. So, we've had some real serious growth in the wastewater funds. And as you know, that's an enterprise fund, and that is set in there for future expansions and for maintenance and upkeep. Also, I would note that 10 years ago, well, this is 2019, which is the most current that I had there at the library. The debt service, the debt coverage ratio in 2010 was 168, and today, it's 2.59. So, you're gaining in income and also debt coverage. So, it tells me that you've got some bonding capacity there. And the reason I'm so belaboring on this point is we have real negative interest rates right now, and it behooves the community to spend some money and get out there and get some of this stuff done. So, and by the way, just while I'm here, the water system is growing greater than the sanitary sewer system by those metrics. Also, I went to the capital improvements project, and this is 2018 to 2020, and it looks to me like for the six years on the horizon, they don't have anything programmed in there for revenue bonds. Now, I don't know if that's changed since today, but that, there again, that's the most current information that I have that's publicly available. So, I think we do have the ability to get that job done, and I would encourage that we get it done sooner rather than later. And then, finally, it said to show that people want to go into that area. So, last week, we got the most current impact fee report, and in all the districts, you know, there are seven districts, and we can measure by percentage where the money is coming from. And the money in the greatest quantity in all of the accounts comes from five and six, which is where that is. And like was said before by David, you know, people are wanting to use, move generally south and in this area, and I think that's an evidence of that. So, I think this is a good plan. I think you should move on it. I think this idea could make it better. And I want to, and I don't own any of this ground out at that intersection. I just want to make that clear. But, I've been involved in the growth of Lincoln. This is my hometown, and I want to see it thrive, so.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Mr. Kruger?
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
Good evening, actually. My name is Anne Post. I'm an attorney with Baylor Ednan. My address is 1248 O Street, Suite 600 in Lincoln. And I'm here today on behalf of the Home Builders Association of Lincoln to provide comment on the comprehensive plan. So, first, I'm going to start by noting that there are several policies within this plan that a home builder supports and feels will be extremely beneficial to the Lincoln community to keep, to help maintain housing affordability to the extent that we can, help keep housing affordable in Lincoln. Some of these include a commitment to revising zoning codes to allow more missing middle housing by right, a commitment to also review the zoning code to allow more accessory dwelling units, to continue to review parking ratios, to examine the need for minimum parking ratios, and even a commitment through the Affordable Housing Plan to revisit the use of assessment districts to build infrastructure for new housing projects. Those policies are going to be important for keeping housing affordable in Lincoln moving forward, and we look forward to working with the planning department to try and help implement some of those in the future. So, first positive, those are great policies. We wholeheartedly support those. However, there are also a few policies that we believe in the plan that will disproportionately constrain the availability and location for new housing and are going to have a negative impact on the cost of housing in Lincoln. These include continuation of Lincoln's contiguous zoning policy. This is the policy that only allows zoning for new residential development, so new neighborhoods within city limits. This is coupled then with our exclusive use of gravity flow sewer. So, this means that we can only upzone property for residential development when we are next to city limits and once we're annexed. You can only be annexed once you're served with utilities, and so, that means gravity flow sewer. So, the combination of those two requirements really limits the property that's actually available for new single-family housing, neighborhood developments, and thus increases pressure on those prices, increasing the cost of housing in Lincoln. So, we would, our request, we'd like to see some flexibility added to those policies. In addition, these policies imply, prohibit the use of sanitary improvement districts. Sanitary and improvement districts, or SIDs, are, by their nature, have to be done outside city limits. So, that would require that residential density zoning outside city limits, something that is not supported by this policy. SIDs are a tool that, we recognize they're not used in Lincoln today, but if they could be, and with discussions with the city and with all stakeholders, tailored to the needs of Lincoln, they are another option for bringing more housing to Lincoln. And so, finally, my final point I wanted to touch on was touched on by Director Carey too, and I completely agree with his comments. This plan does not say that it adopts the Salt Creek Resiliency Plan in its entirety, just by reference. I agree with that. But, I would point out, I would state that there are a few policies of the Salt Creek Resiliency Plan that would be adopted through the comprehensive plan. Some of those include widening the minimum corridor requirements. So, that's widening the area around what would be drainage district or potentially stream beds that would go through neighborhoods. So, more green space around those areas equals more square footage for every neighborhood, equals a higher cost for every lot and every new house in a new neighborhood. So, that is a recommendation of the Salt Creek Resiliency Plan that is recommended in this plan. In addition, there are some recommendations for cluster zoning. That was a non-structural mitigation measure recommended by the Salt Creek Resiliency Plan that's also in this plan. And so, those are a few of the policies that we've asked to be taken out of the plan or taken out of the plan to allow those stakeholder groups that are currently discussing those to continue those discussions. And when a plan is adopted, that could be incorporated by reference into the plan in a future amendment, like several of our plans continually are. For example, the Housing Affordability Plan, the Climate Action Plan are continually adopted by reference into the comp plan. So, those, our suggested red lines were emailed out to all the council people last week. They should have been included in the council packet. I'd be happy to go through those individually if you'd like, or just answer any questions on those. But, we'd ask this council to consider adopting those in whole or in part, whatever the council, what the council sees fit. So, finally, I'm going to wrap up my testimony by, again, acknowledging the effort that the planning department has put in this. As Director Carey said, it's been two years they've been working on putting this together, two years of public meetings, and it is a lot to put together a plan for the growth of the community. I thought it was a lot just to read it, and they wrote it all. So, I want to thank them for their effort they put into this. There are a lot of great policies in it, and we recognize that and look forward to working with them on the implementation of some of those policies. But, there are also a few policies we feel that are going to have an upward pressure on housing prices, and we'd like to see discussion or amendment of those policies to allow housing to maintain as, remain as affordable as possible in Lincoln's community. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Post?
No.
Councilman Washington?
Thank you. I just have one question, Ms. Post, and thank you for coming down and articulating your comments. But, you said that widening corridors and cluster zoning was not just in the Salt Creek plan, but you think it, no, you don't, I'm sorry.
Yes.
But, you're saying it exists in the whole comp plan, and you'd like it, you'd like these two policies taken out of the entire comp plan, regardless if it's Salt Creek or anything. You don't want to see cluster zoning?
What we'd say is that there are stakeholder groups that are currently looking at adopting some of those policies of the Salt Creek Resiliency Plan. So, those include cluster zoning, those include some of those other policies, as updates to the Drainage Criteria Manual, as further discussions of the Salt Creek Resiliency Plan. What we're saying is that because those are part of those discussions, and as was pointed out, it is a policy of the plan to continue looking at the Salt Creek Resiliency Plan, discussing with the development community and how it can be implemented, that those should be discussed as part of that project, and that those should be, if they are ultimately something that is incorporated as a part of that, as a part of the plan, as a part of adoption, what ultimate, recommendations ultimately come forward out of that plan for this council, it would, should be included at that time, once they've been through that process. And then, that plan, as is generally the case with affordable housing plans or other plans, at that point, would be adopted by reference into the comp plan. And so, what we're saying is that while those policies are under discussion, they should be under discussion instead of adopted to come back, to come back and look at them again. So, to summarize that all in maybe one sentence, maybe two, actually, you can count, is that, you know, the plan says that this is going to happen, and we'll talk about how it happens. I guess what we're looking at now, right now, is the discussion is still whether that happens. And that's under discussion, but it's still a whether that happens to how it happens.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Post? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We got Mr. Seacrest up to bat.
Good evening. Mike Kent Seacrest, 1128 Lincoln Mall. Our law firm has been asked by, to assist approximately 20 nonprofits and for-profit entities in reviewing the proposed floodplain regulations that are on the internet. We also know that those involve the Drainage Criteria Manual and some of Chapter 26 subdivision and Chapter 27 zoning regulations. We are also working with five Lincolns, civil engineers, and other land use attorneys who work extensively in the land development business to determine which regulations complement and incorporate properly the NOAA 14 rain data, which is out there, which we call the science, and which ones maybe go way beyond and are maybe unnecessary or costly. And we want to be sure we do that proper balance. The coalition that I'm involved in is very, recognizes flood protection is very important. But, we also know that the comprehensive plan, which you're about to adopt, has also other very important public policies of housing affordability, preservation of existing neighborhoods, the South Hay Market, South Bottoms, North Belmont, University Place, redevelopment incentives, infill redevelopment of commercial and residential, economic development, workforce creation, retention, economic growth, infrastructure development, that also are very important to this community. And we want to be sure we get the proper balance of those, and you're the lucky ones that get to help us make that proper balance go forward. So, we want to be sure the community's understanding the proposed federal or floodplain regulations and are they properly balanced. I'm honored to have a meeting with the mayor's team on, later this week, to hopefully design a collaborative process, which David Carey mentioned is in the comprehensive plan. There's four policies that are listing, talking about that engagement of proper floodplain management with the other important initiatives in the comprehensive plan. And so, there are four policies that talk about this new collaborative process that we want to partner with the city and with the city council, the coalition, and the public at large to carry out along the way. But, we also, like Anne, feel there's several policies in the floodplain section particularly that maybe are saying a conclusion before we finish having that dialogue with the administration, yourselves, and the council. And so, we think in a perfect world, we'd ask you to delay those type of policies. But, staff has worked hard and really hard and come up with a lot of new ideas and good policies in other areas. So, we don't feel we can ask you to not do those things. But, we would very strongly ask and request at a minimum that the city administration, the city council, the coalition, and the public work together in this collaborative study that we're proposing, an educational process on what flooding is like and what the new floodplain regulations should be along the way. And as part of that, we think there's going to be some revisions to the draft that's out there on the web. But, we also think that that dialogue's going to lead to some suggested changes back into this comprehensive plan that you have in front of you today. And as long as you and I and everybody recognizes, let's get this process, collaborative process to go forward, but let's also recognize that it might require some redoing of the language, particularly in the floodplain and open space areas of the comprehensive plan. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Seacrest? Okay, seeing none. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? Okay, seeing none. Director Carey, Mr. Barnes, would you like to come up and provide a rebuttal?
Thank you. I would more or less say that not quite the rebuttal, but more just to follow up and make sure that some basics are understood and put on the record tonight. So, I think at the very end there, Mr. Seacrest's comments, I think, I know that the planning department can commit to being part of that collaborative process that's moving forward on several topics, but in particular about the floodplain discussions. And also that, to agree that certainly if there are changes that are, that were to come forward as a result of that process, that the comprehensive plan can and will be amended. We have a process for that. It does happen very often. And at the very least, we look at this plan every five years anyways. But, we do do standalone amendments as well. And if that, if that comes to be something that is needed as a result of that collaborative process, we will certainly conduct that process and get the plan into alignment with what those final decisions actually are. And again, those final decisions haven't been made, and we want to make sure we're being clear about that this evening, and then we will follow that process as it moves I do, would also like to just kind of hit on, there was a little bit of a theme in some of the comments about wanting to make sure that we're planning for the future growth and completely understand that there's interest in that interchange in the future. And I think that there is a little bit of a physical constraint on that in the sense of how the infrastructure is coming from the north to the south through the Stevens Creek. Certainly, some of those discussions will probably be had in the future, especially once the east, the South Beltway is open and using, being used as part of the network for transportation. But, I think some different decisions would have to be made on where we're putting our infrastructure dollars or how fast we are doing that. So, that's something that, again, similar to, you know, other changes that could happen, we might have an amendment to the plan in the future. But, we feel like the proposed growth plan that we have put in front of you is very solid, does meet the demands of growth, and is following that kind of predictability that we put in place over the last several decades of where growth is happening, where it can be expected to happen, and follow the infrastructure that's being planned for. So, with that, I think I'll stop and see if there's any other questions that we want to try to answer this evening.
Are there any questions for Director Carey or Mr. Barnes?
Okay, then I have one question, follow-up on what Mr. Seacrest was talking about. I guess, just to be clear, the 2050 comp plan, what Mr. Seacrest is talking about is more of the Salt Creek Resiliency Plan, correct? And the issue that Mr. Seacrest is bringing up deals with the Salt Creek Resiliency Plan, and there's still time for him and the coalition to work through the issues that he's bringing up?
That's correct.
Okay. And the 2050 comp plan, the language that it has in there about the floodplain is the language that we used through the Climate Action Plan that's already been adopted, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Seacrest and his coalition will still have time to work through their process over the next couple of months or however long it takes for the Salt Creek Resilience Plan to go through?
That's, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other, Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah. I agree, and I've had a couple of discussions with Paul and David, so I think I'm ready to move forward on this. But, there's just a lot of language in this where it says adopt and revise the minimum corridor standards to preserve a longer and a wider stream corridor. We, I guess that's all part of the plan. Would we have to amend our comp plan then, since if we decide not to preserve longer and wider stream corridors?
I think if there was, in this, you could say this about any policies that are your I think if there was, in this, you could say this about any policies that are currently in the plan or could be in the plan in the future. I think, I think if there were some hard decisions made that clearly ended up being different than what the plan is saying, that we would move on adopting the, amending the plan, excuse me, to reflect that. So, I think if those future decisions are, go in a different direction, yes, we would be adopting the plan.
Any other questions?
No other questions, no.
Okay. Councilman Cho.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Building on what Councilman McGinnis said, and I think, based on the conversation I've had with it, that this is a plan, but it's always changeable. If we get enough new information, and someone wants to make a resolution or an ordinance, we can change it. It's, it is kind of written in sandstone, but not real.
Yeah, I, I mean, I appreciate that, that question and comment. What I like to say about the comprehensive plan is that it is definitely taken seriously here in our community. We have a long history of that. And that's good, because it does provide that framework of how we are going to grow in the future and what we want our community to look like and be like in the future. But it is, it is as a guide for all those other decisions to be made. So, it's something that definitely needs to, to be updated regularly, and we do do that every five years. And, and we have a history of making amendments when those differences or those changes have occurred. So, it is a living document, and it needs to reflect the intentions of the community. And, and our process that we went through for this major update of the plan is, is reflected in what the content is, that it is a, a mixture of results based on what we heard from people and the updated information that we have put in the plan. So, it, it does, it does and can change over time, and so, we're not against doing that. It, it's something that needs to happen.
What's that? I heard "not against doing that." Thank you.
Any further questions for Director Carey or Mr. Barnes?
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
A lot of it.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll go and move on to the next item, please.
Item 5H is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for October 15th through October 31st, 2021.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item?
Hi, my name is Susan Chalupka, and my address is 2610 North 42nd Street. On August 31st, 2021, a large tree north of us across the alley fell down on my vehicle, which was parked at our driveway. I called forestry to let them know about the tree. I also called my insurance company and let them know. Later on, my insurance company said that my vehicle was a total loss, so I called 1011 to come out and kind of do like a story on it, just because of the extensive damages done to my vehicle. I did notice that the tree was marked earlier, so therefore, I never called to report it to forestry because I assumed that they would take care of it. Is any questions?
Are there any questions for, I'm sorry, would you remind me if you lost me again?
Ah, Susan Chalupka.
Chalupka?
Yeah.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Chalupka? Okay, so, kind of how this process works is, since you came up, you provided some information. Someone from the city will then come up and provide information about your case, and then you'll have an opportunity then to provide a rebuttal. So, you'll have another chance to speak. And then, we'll see if there's anyone else who wants to testify. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Okay. So, do you have any other information that you'd like to share at this time?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay. So, then I'd like to invite someone up from the city, either City Law or LTU or...
Good evening. Lori Gruber, City of Lincoln, Community Operations Forester, 3131 O Street, Suite 300.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Yes, August 31st was one of six significant weather events for us in 2020. We received numerous phone calls. Ms. Chalupka did file a claim against the city. We have, in cooperation with law, denied her claim because we had well over 50 incidents that night. The storm knocked the tree over. We cannot predict weather. We cannot, yeah, weather is beyond our control. Most of the times, it's referred to as an act of God. The tree had not been marked for removal prior to the storm. We, the last time that we were at that location was in 2012, and that was for a private limb that fell from a tree during a storm that was blocking the street. So, we have not received calls on this particular tree. We had no reason to inspect it. And I can answer, hopefully, any questions that you may have.
Yeah. Are there any questions at this, or questions at this time? Councilman Washington?
Thank you for coming down.
Sure.
Ms. Chalupka said that there was a marking on the tree. Was there any marking on the tree?
No, we had not been called to that tree. So, it was not, we had, I mean, we didn't have any service requests for pruning or removal on that particular tree.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, so, yeah, there was no call before, no kind of indication, it wasn't on the list to get removed, it seemed to be healthy. So, what I'm hearing you say is that it wasn't, it fell down not because of negligence of the city, but because it was a severe weather event?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. Ms. Chalupka, I'd invite you back up, and you then have an opportunity to provide a rebuttal to anything that was said.
Yes, I know, like, we had, like, like trouble with, like, some more kind of trees kind of by the large tree. One kind of had fallen, almost kind of hit our house. And, like I said before, we never really called about the large tree falling because, you know, like, I, I had actually went over there and seen it marked, so that I thought that I would, you know, see, thought that the city would take care of it. That's why we pretty much didn't call about that. And with the tree falling with the windstorm, there was just actually something else, like, we, we had lived at our place for like 51 years, and besides, like, the windstorm, like, there had been something else, like, wrong with the tree, like, I don't know if it was rotten, or they had the Emerald bore bug kind of going on at that time. Just more extensive, just besides the storm, that had to do it to, like, bring the whole thing down, because it was like a huge tree. That's pretty much all I want to say.
Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
What happens next is, we go through and we vote on all of the topics that we just talked on. When we get to item 5H, some, anyone from the council, would, that would be then an opportunity for someone to remove your name from this list. And if someone removes your name, and we move forward, and we vote to remove your name, then that means that you would be removed from the denied list and moved to the accepted list. Okay? So, if someone makes a motion to remove your name, and we vote to approve that, that means that your name moves from the denied to the approved list. If we do not remove your name from the list, then that means that your name stays on the denied list, meaning that, meaning your claim would still be denied. Does that make sense?
A little bit.
Okay. I'll just go like this, if it, just look at me, I'll go like this.
I have been to a council meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll go like this, if that, if your, if your, if your claim is paid, I'll go like this, because that means that your claim was not paid.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you so much. Councilwoman Raybold?
I have a question for Mrs., Ms. Chalupka.
Ms. Chalupka?
I have just one question. Can you tell me exactly the amount of $5,876.69, what does that represent?
Uh, that was actually the claim through my insurance company, just like, pretty much, I guess, for my vehicle. And then, I guess, I don't know if this kind of has anything to do with it, but in the past year, I've been kind of having trouble with my vehicle in the shop, with like the engine and stuff. And I pretty much put like $10,000 into my vehicle in a year, and then that's what kind of frustrated me over, I guess, the whole incident, like, like I said, we lived, you know, on our address for 51 years, and, you know, there just had to have been something wrong with the tree, you know, for like the, the large tree to come down. Because, like I said, I seen it marked, and usually when you have like a memory in your head, that, I mean, that's pretty much, you know, what I seen. But that's pretty much through the state, through my insurance company.
And then, what is your deductible, then?
It's, I think it's about $100.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on item 5H? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
We can now vote on our public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is adopting, or, excuse me, item 5A and 5B will need a motion to delay action to 12-6.
I move that we delay action until December 6th, 2021.
Second.
Moved by Councilman McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5C is accepting the air quality program grant, work plan for the 2022-2023 federal fiscal years, introduced by Raybold.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Raybold, seconded by Councilwoman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5D is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 21020, application of the urban development director to review as a conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, and to approve a proposed amendment to the North 56th Street and Arbor Road redevelopment plan to add the central lumber sales redevelopment project to include construction of 122,500 square foot distribution facility on property generally located at North 62nd Street and Arbor Road, introduced by Raybold.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Councilman McGinnis, you're recognized.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend number one. I hereby move to amend bill number 21R 513 by replacing the resolution introduced on November 8th, 2021, with a substitute resolution attached here, too.
Second.
Moved by Councilman McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Councilman McGinnis?
Uh, this is just to correct a couple.
Boo-boos.
Yeah. Couple, making it a little more accurate, in a couple places in this document where they mentioned, they didn't mention central lumber, but they mentioned another project. So, just making this correction for typos.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll on the motion to amend?
Washington?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Okay, now back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Councilman Beckius?
Uh, yes, I would just like to make a, a quick comment. Thank you, in a world that's easier and easier to move things around physically, thank you for continuing to make Lincoln the home of central lumber, this location, we appreciate that.
Councilman McGinnis?
Well, I guess I ditto that, but again, we got a long, long Lincoln company that wants to expand and keep working to expand their business and do good things for the city of Lincoln. So, this is exactly why we need this, to do this. And this is a good use.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll on the main motion?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5E is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 21023, application of the urban development director to review as a conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, and to approve proposed amendment to the West O redevelopment plan to add the Instinct Redevelopment Project Center of Excellence for construction of an approximately 250,000 square foot production facility, warehouse, and office building on property generally located at West, uh, southwest 32nd Street on the south side of West O Street, introduced by Raybold.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing, Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, this is another example of a, a Lincoln company that's willing to expand. Actually, it's a St. Louis company, MIA Industries. But they're really, really, I want to thank them for all the work they did to get this to come through. It wasn't a, a super easy project, but they were very committed to Lincoln and to try to make this work. So, they did a lot of yeoman work to try to make this come across. So, I want to say a lot of thank you to MIA Industries for choosing to expand here in Lincoln, and this is a good thing for us.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5F is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 21024, application of urban development director to review as a conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, and to approve a proposed amendment to the Antelope Valley redevelopment plan to add the Antelope Square Apartments redevelopment project for a 152-unit multifamily housing project on property generally located north of P Street between 22nd and 23rd Streets, introduced by Raybold.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Councilwoman Raybold?
You know, I've struggled with this project, but I do support it because I am really pleased to see the trail connectivity tied into it. I'm pleased to see the trail expansion. I think that's important for the growth of our city. I'm, I'm pleased to see the more inclusivity of this project, reaching out all the way up to Trago Park and incorporating that, and enhancing, I guess, mobility for vehicles and creating diagonal parking. I would, am also very pleased to see as part of the redevelopment agreement that they will put in writing their commitment to do 10% affordable housing. I would love to see that increase because we know that we, we have a long way to go to, to achieve our goal of affordability, but it is a step in the right direction.
Any further discussion? Councilman Washington?
Chairman Bowers, thank you. I just wanted to say that I know there was a lot of hard feelings about this project, and there was a lot of conversation about this project. And I said that I would pay attention to how this project plays out, and this is the first step in how this project is playing out. And the fact that we have an expanded project area, and we have a commitment for bike lanes and for investments in our community and public spaces, gives me hope and heart. So, with that, I can support this.
Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Okay, we'll go grab Councilman Beckius.
Item 5G, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21002, request of planning director for the adoption of Plan Forward 2050, the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, introduced by Raybold.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Councilman Beckius, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Bowers. Now is the time to thank the dozens, if not hundreds, of community members that volunteered their time to, over the last two years, to help create this comprehensive plan. Volunteered thousands of hours to help create this, this, this plan. And I would just like to publicly acknowledge and thank those community volunteers for the efforts that they put forward. Additionally, I would like to thank Director Carey, Mr. Barnes, Mr. Theroff, for their work in putting together this plan, and their, their team's work in putting together this plan. A comprehensive plan is a, is a guidebook for the future. Some things we'll implement, some things we won't. That's the way a plan goes, and we will see what bears fruit going forward. But I'm always hopeful that... But I'm always, um, hopeful that a plan is ambitious, uh, in its intent. And then when the rubber meets the road, we'll get to what actually gets implemented. And, and that's, that's how a, a plan should go. Um, and so I'm, I'm thankful that we have, uh, a committed staff that presents an ambitious plan, um, from which to start. Two things that I really want to highlight that I think were very, um, important in the 2050 comp plan, uh, included this year were topics of workforce development and topics of equity throughout the community, both of which were relatively new to our comp plan process, uh, than we've had in years past. Uh, as larger cities, when they do their comp plan, it's pretty typical to see workforce development issues come into a comp plan. It's new in our community, but I think a step in the right direction. Same thing with issues of equity in our community, making sure that everyone in our community is experiencing our community, uh, as best they can. And making sure that we are turning that lens to, um, issues of equity to make sure that those things, um, are fruitful for all. So I just wanted to comment on those, uh, two particular items. Um, and I look forward to supporting the, um, the comp plan, although personally there may not be, I may not support every single line item in the comp plan. Um, you know, the, the comp plan is ambitious. It is a plan, and I'm, uh, thankful again to the staff and the community volunteers that put it together.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Raybold?
I want to thank the administration and certainly the planning department for their engagement. The process is so important to get our community input, feedback, and their opinions on how we can make this plan better because it's a plan that's going to impact all of us for years to come. So I, I want to say thank you so much for all those folks who showed up, provided their comments, listed their concerns. It's a living document that will continue to be modified and changed as we grow and change. So I just want to thank the administration and the staff for all the hours that they put in, in gathering all this input.
Councilman McGinnis?
Yes. Again, I'm following counsel person Beckus. I agree with most of what he says. And like him, there's probably parts of this plan that I'm not 100% behind at this time, but again, it's a plan and it's a plan that we can work with and, and mold and, and go forward. Earlier this week or last week, I heard from the State Chamber of Commerce after they had, um, had a chance to poll all their members. And they had one item that stuck out mostly, and that was workforce. They need more people. Um, the state needs more people. We all know, know that. And having a comp plan that starts to discuss that for high-quality workforce is, is really good to see. And the equity and the diversity of our workforce in this community is going to grow. And so we just need to keep working on that. The other thing that showed up in it was housing. And the other part of this is what I want to keep an eye on this comp plan, is it really going to create, uh, workforce, middle market, all types of housing, not just affordable housing, but affordability in housing. And that's the part that we need to keep a pretty good eye on because there could be a lot of regulations in here that may drive up the cost of housing. And we need to keep a quick, a card, a really hard eye on, on a lot of that. Few of the other things, I, I, it's great. I think our, uh, comp plan is starting to hit on things that are important to the community. Again, housing, childcare, city amenities, a lot of other things that are important to our community. So overall, I agree, this plan, you know, didn't take much to do. Many of you say it's just... Kind of just a couple pages, a couple words, but, uh, it was a great job put together by our planning department and, uh, wish luck in moving forward. And again, it's a plan that we'll just keep working off of to build our future.
Thank you. Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. Um, I, I don't have a lot different things to say. My fellow councilpeople have said, um, many of the things that I wanted to say, but I, I wanted to point out one thing. Besides the thank you to everyone who put time and effort into this plan, I really want to thank the staff for assuring that this plan was a transparent process, that doing the plan was a, a transparent process, and that the public really felt invited into this process and was able to really, um, add their hopes in this process, uh, and this plan. And, um, I can't tell, I'm a, I have a background in preparing and reviewing environmental impact statements. So I have to tell you that I am incredibly pleased that you took the time to respond to every single comment, um, and that's in appendix A. And you explained what you did with those comments. And even if you didn't accept them, you let folks know that they weren't just speaking into a vacuum, but that they were being heard. And I really, uh, really appreciate the responsiveness, um, uh, the explanation, the transparency of the planning process. And I want to, uh, thank in particular, uh, the folks who came forward this evening to speak. Uh, it must feel daunting to, um, come forward with ideas for submittal to the process at the end of the, at the end of the road. And you reminded us, and you reminded the public who's paying attention this evening, that there are still pieces of this plan that can be, uh, modified and can be added to. And so thank you for all of those who came forward to ask us to make certain that we keep multiple voices at the table when we talk about the Salt Creek Flight Plane Resiliency. I didn't say that correctly, but I think we all know what I'm talking about. And also to Mr. Krueger, who, um, gave us a pretty bright light to, to pay attention to some sub-area planning coming forward. So thank you.
Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Same tune, different councilman? So, uh, back pre-pandemic, I remember going to the Pinnacle Bank Arena where we had a big kickoff and a nice presentation, and we all stood around together and talked about the plan. And people pointed to things they didn't like, pointed to things they didn't understand, pointed to things they did like. And then a couple weeks ago, I went out to Spring Creek Prairie where we had a, a public event. And there were people there. I went out to South of Denton in Lancaster County where people came out to talk about the comprehensive plan. And I want to say thank you to the staff, thank you for all the residents of our community that participated. Much like my fellow councilpeople have said, I think this is a great start. It's a great guidepost, it's a great place for us to work from, and now we need to get to work and see what we can make out of this to grow our city. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing much left to say after all of these great comments, but I, I do want to thank all the testifiers. That was, we heard some really great ideas that we will need to keep top of mind, and I really appreciate, um, Director Carey's openness to, um, to all of it. And it is a living document. And I'd be remiss not to mention Paul Barnes, you are amazing as well. And I know you had a lot of help, right? Um, with your colleagues in the planning department. So thank you. It has, to pull this off during a pandemic is no easy, easy job, as we've heard. Um, I just, I do want to, to mention just a couple of other quick things. And one is how much I appreciate that, and I know that Director Carey is tired of me saying this, but I so appreciate having local food mentioned and, um, urban agriculture for the first time ever, right, in history and any comprehensive plan. So thank you so much, especially Paul, for working on that with those advocates. Um, they are still dancing on cloud nine to have that mentioned in, in the plan. So thank you for that so much. I, like, um, uh, others are grateful that we're slowing down, um, the resiliency plan, um, portion, and we never know what to quite call all that. But thank you to Ms. Post and Mr. Seacrest for your comments on that as well. Um, I think that, and again, thanks to your openness, Director Carey, to, uh, to reassuring us, um, as we go forward with that component. So with that, I will stop and just echo what everyone else has said. So thank you to, um, everyone that has made this a reality. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, everyone's had an opportunity to talk. It's been moved and seconded. Um, let's go ahead and call a roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5H is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for October 15th through October 31st, 2021. Introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckus. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right, well, we are going to take about a 10-minute recess, um, so the council will re-adjourn at 7:50. All right, welcome back to the Lincoln City Council meeting of, uh, November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, we'll go ahead and get started with Section Six.
I'll be calling items six A and six B together, Comprehensive Plan Conformance two one zero two one, Application of the Urban Development Director to Review the twenty forty Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan and to Adopt the South Forty-Eighth Street Corridor Redevelopment Plan and Adds the Tabitha InterGen Project for Construction of a four-story multifamily housing structure to provide independent senior housing options and housing opportunities for students enrolled in medical education programs on property generally located at South Forty-Eighth and L Streets. Also, the Related Change of Zone two one zero three seven, Application of Tabitha Inc. for Change from R-two Residential District and R-four Residential District Two and R-two and R-four PUD Plan Unit Development with associated waivers, um, located at forty-seven twenty Randolph Street.
Good evening, uh, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, five-five-five South Tenth Street. Um, you do have two items before you, and I think the council's well aware of what the, the project is. Um, these particular items, six A was before the Planning Commission on October thirteenth, and at that, um, uh, meeting, it was unanimously approved. There were only five, um, planning commissioners there, but it was approved on a five-to-zero vote to come forward. Um, the next item, the, um, Change of Zone twenty-one oh three seven, was at the same meeting. There wasn't, uh, a sufficient number of votes. It was held over for another meeting, and then on October twenty-seventh, uh, Planning Commission voted eight to zero to recommend, uh, conditional approval of twenty-one oh three seven. Um, Urban Design, uh, met on September seventh to look at the, um, uh, renderings that they've worked for, and, um, they approved on a four-to-zero vote and expressed, uh, strong support for this project. Um, I know there have been a number of neighborhood meetings, and I think there's some neighbors here to, to speak to that. Um, and what, um, what I think's exciting about this project is I've gotten to learn the word intergenerational.
[laughing]
And intergenerational means a lot, but I think what it means to me is that it's trying to bring together two spectrums, uh, of an age demographic, and, you know, kind of sadly, in a way, both spectrums have experienced loneliness, and so the project itself is to try to merge these and design the building in a way to address those and provide quality of life for both spectrums of that intergenerational, and I think that's a, a worthy and worthwhile goal. It obviously feeds, uh, uh, um, addresses our affordable housing, um, issues to create mobility within the marketplace. We are certainly supportive of that. Um, just a little bit of process. This body previously approved a blight area. In order to use tax increment financing, you also need to have a redevelopment plan for this area. That's what is before you, and then an amendment within that plan, or that overarching plan, is what we are before you to ask your approval today. Uh, what would come later, a later date, would be a redevelopment agreement that would allocate the various resources that come from tax increment financing. Um, with us today is Andrew Willis and a number of, uh, the Tabitha team, and I think they would like to be able to go through and, um, speak to their, their item, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions for Director Marvin at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for sticking with us.
[laughing]
I think I'm glad you went after a break. Uh, my name is Kristi Hendricks. I'm President and CEO at Tabitha, forty-seven twenty Randolph Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Thank you for allowing us to present this evening on the Tabitha InterGen Project. Uh, this is a project that we believe strongly, um, will create a community that emphasizes reducing loneliness, as Dan just mentioned, creating a new and moderately priced senior housing option, and also reducing workforce shortages that will positively impact lives and ultimately reduce healthcare costs for the people who live there. There is currently an epidemic of loneliness across generations. The numbers are staggering. Um, if you've not, uh, seen the numbers, um, the young people are actually reporting higher percentage of loneliness than even older adults, and COVID has certainly exacerbated this, um, deadly disease. Isolation and loneliness have been found to be more damaging to health than obesity and smoking, and a recent study found that a senior's life expectancy can be shortened by up to eight years due to loneliness. InterGen is a solution for seniors who may need some support, um, but generally are very independent, certainly not dependent on twenty-four-seven, um, support. We'll utilize and support a home care delivery, um, system around them, um, if and when that's needed to help them age in their own homes, and the proximity, of course, to Tabitha's campus makes this project, um, readily available to those resources should they be needed. And we also plan to have, um, a full-time property manager that will be there on staff, and that person will be trained, um, to watch for signs and indications that there may be some failure and that there may be some additional support services needed so that proactively we can help keep those seniors healthy and at home. Most importantly, though, um, and by design, the intergenerational residents will engage in purposeful neighbor, neighboring, and this will be among both the young and the old. Many have asked us, um, so will the young people live here and the old people live there? Uh, no, I might be the next-door neighbor to a young person and, um, and vice versa. They'll be living among one another. Um, we're excited about that because this will be how we keep costs from healthcare down by having, uh, one another be really in, in tune to safety and well-being. More than ninety percent of our apartments that, um, we'll be building are going to be priced within the moderate income range that we, uh, use the twenty-twenty-one HUD moderate income limits, and that certainly is a great need in this great city. Tabitha, as is our history, will also establish a fund for rent subsidies should a senior's income change after, um, they've been a resident at the InterGen. We're committed to keeping costs down through community collaborations. So, for example, we imagine partnering with local culinary schools to come and practice their skills in our community kitchen, creating communal dining for dinners for InterGen residents, learning, laughing, and staying healthy together. Health Sciences students who live at the InterGen will have access to real-life, real-time lessons and inspirations provided by the seniors who they will come to know as neighbors. How better to know if you're cut out for the profession than when you've been called to study and hope to join? I'm happy to report that to date, two seniors have already expressed, um, and reached out to us with interest in living at the Tabitha InterGen, one a corner room specifically, and that is without having us fade in the ground. Tabitha has been a resident in the Witherby neighborhood for all of our one hundred and thirty-five years. We love our neighborhood, and we're proud of the contributions that we have been able to, to make possible with our presence in this city center area that we love. Tabitha and leaders of the Witherby Neighborhood Association have been working together over the past months to recognize and understand the variety of perspectives on this project. The association members have, in fact, helped shape this project in a way that both preserves and protects values that matter to both of us. Our respect for them is immense. As an example of our collaboration, I'd like to highlight a few of the changes that we've made as a result of our collaboration with them to this project. We've been able to reduce the building height from sixty-four feet to fifty-seven point five feet. That was a, a concern that was raised. We recognize, uh, the reasons for it, but as Dan, Dan mentioned, one of the critical components of an intergenerational community is having, um, a great deal of community space. We don't want the residents living there to be in their apartments behind closed doors. That doesn't reduce loneliness. Coming together in shared space does, so we needed that space to be able to do that. We also increased the landscaping on the project so that it could be, um, enhanced to soften and transition from the sidewalks to the buildings, and those are the exhibits and pictures that we have with us today. Tabitha has incorporated two bioswales in this project's design to help manage stormwater runoff. One of them is located in the median of the surface parking area, and the other is at the corner of Forty-seventh and L. The safety of the neighborhood is very important to Tabitha. We stand with the Witherby Neighborhood Association on recommendations for additional stop signs along J Street to help mitigate some of the traffic concerns that we have in this area. We also stand with the association on the need for adequate water, sewage, and other public utilities in our neighborhood, and we would advocate with them for future improvements. In conclusion, it is our expectation that the Tabitha InterGen community, a first of its kind in the nation, will not only unite seniors and students under one roof and improve one another's lives, but will also serve our neighborhood and the great, greater community well. We will continue to work diligently to collaborate with the Witherby Neighborhood Association to fulfill that expectation. I do have with me also Andrew Willis from Klein Williams, and, um, if needed, we have Jeff Morrison here with us from Olson to answer questions. Before they come, any questions for me?
Are there any questions at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Andrew Willis, two thirty-three South Thirteenth Street. Um, so the proposed project, um, one hundred and twenty-eight units, as mentioned, ninety-one percent are affordable, targeted at sixty to eighty percent AMI. Um, this is, it's seniors and, and students and, and young people, and, um, you know, it does a couple of important things, and, and, you know, we've got infield development. We've got a new and unique housing option that doesn't exist, not only in Lincoln, but nowhere, but this will be, you know, it will, you know, something new, um, and different that we need. Affordable housing, and, um, it, and then by location, it creates, you know, this continuum of living options, you know, in the continuum for seniors, and so it's, it kind of fills a lot of, a lot of purposes. Um, it's designed there, you know, this is the idea is to create, you know, safe biking and walking paths, good connectivity, especially to Brian, um, with the students who would be part, part of this. Again, just trying to hit a lot of, a lot of important things, and this project really, really should, uh, be a, a pretty great addition to the city. As far as the, um, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things on the, on the PUD. Um, you know, the, this is already subject to a special, this area would be subject to a special permit for, uh, residential healthcare. The, the intergenerational living facility didn't really fit into that specifically because of the student population, because it wasn't, I mean, it just didn't quite fit, and so, uh, when we're trying to figure out how to make that fit, uh, and with discussions with planning in the city, uh, the PUD seemed like the appropriate approach and, and the reason why we went this way. So, this would otherwise, you know, we maybe presumably could have been coming with a, you know, proposed amendment to the special permit, but again, this, it didn't quite fit, and this just made the most sense. So, that's, that's where that PUD, um, and that flexibility really makes this work. Um, you know, a couple of things, you know, there's obviously been some, some concerns or issues from the neighbors about what, you know, is this a, is this the, uh, you know, the first piece that leads to more multifamily housing in this neighborhood? The answer is no. That's, I mean, the PUD is, you need a minimum three acres. You need that, that fits on the campus. The, it makes sense. It's complementary to the uses because it's part of that Tabitha campus, because it's part of that Tabitha PUD. It's not, it isn't, it, this is still R-two zoning underneath, so you can't go build across the street multifamily. That's R-two zoning. So, it doesn't change. It's, it should not be the, you know, it's not a stepping stone to, you know, the, the first piece that's going to lead to a change in the community. It really isn't. Um, I think that's really important. Um, again, as Kristi already mentioned, we've really been trying to work with the neighbors throughout this entire process, but again, even after that planning commission meeting, and, and they've really went back and they've worked hard to figure out, okay, one of the, one of the waivers, one of the main waivers that was causing people hesitation was the, uh, request waiver for sixty-five-foot height. Um, and so they've figured out how to reduce that down to fifty-seven and a half feet, the building. Um, the, the main campus building is fifty-eight feet, so again, it fits perfectly. It's, it's real complementary. It shouldn't, it, that should really alleviate a lot of concerns, or hopefully it does, from the neighbors. Again, just trying to, trying to make that more complementary, make it fit even better. Um, you know, other than that, again, the PUD covers the entire area, so, uh, but this is really, I mean, this is the main focus, is that new, the, the new intergenerational facility. It should be, um, again, it should fit in really nicely. The other waivers in the PUD, uh, some of them dealt with the other piece, the parking stalls in the main campus that are already grandfathered in, so that doesn't really address, I mean, it's not going to change. Um, the, the, um, the reduction in parking spaces, this, you know, it's one-bedroom, some micro-units, and again, mainly seniors. We don't think this is, you know, going to create, this is not going to create the, the traffic that would be from a one hundred and twenty-eight units otherwise. This really should, should not have the same amount of cars and traffic. Uh, setbacks are kind of common with, with what's been done. Again, I, I, I think it, it fits in really well, even though we have this, you know, the PUD to make sure, to, to allow this, it really does, it's really complementary with the, with the Tabitha campus, and it's going to fit in nicely, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Councilwoman Irby?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Willis, for coming down and, and supporting this, and, uh, I'm really excited about this project because I commend Tabitha and the team for listening to the neighbors, reducing the height, um, adding and enhancing the landscaping. Of course, affordability for low-income seniors and students is, is really very important. One of the other issues that the neighbors raised was about the infrastructure. Some of the water system, is it antiquated, outmoded? Is it going to be able to handle the capacity? Some of the residents cited repeated breaks, uh, in the water mains, and they were concerned with all this added, uh, stress of this new development, and I don't know if that's a question for you or for, for Olson or the engineers to be able to answer.
I'll answer very broadly, but then I'll probably defer to Olson. Uh, I mean, they, we've worked with LTU. I mean, they've done all the, we've done all the testing, looking at stormwater runoff, looking at all the infrastructure, and it's, and they have not rec, I mean, it seems to, there isn't any problems identified. This should fit, and then obviously part of, uh, tax increment financing that will be asked, some of that will be for, uh, public improvement, so, um, but again, Jeff can answer that better than I can.
Jeff Morrison with Olson at six oh one P Street. Um, to kind of answer that, yeah, so, we, when we looked at this project, we looked at it, kind of the existing conditions and the proposed conditions of what we're doing here. Um, there's existing conditions that were there. This was a residential neighborhood. There was six or seven houses that were already there in place. Um, since then, all those houses have been removed, and this land is open now. Um, so we're really looking at the two comparisons of what that was then versus now, um, and even though what we're putting in place is more than obviously the six or seven residential houses, they still, they still are able to develop on this land, and they, based on pipe sizing, everything, it's completely adequate of what we're, we're needing here. Um, when you start talking about the city infrastructure of pipe breaks or anything along those lines, um, I don't think that necessarily falls under the developer to fix, um, what's going on, um, on city main, city mains, um, even though that they're meeting what's there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Cho?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Morrison, thank you very much for coming forward. You mentioned that there were some residential housing units there that were, that are no longer there. I'm a little concerned about, um, hard surfaces and water runoff. Can you talk about that for a second?
Yes, I can. Um, sorry, let me, uh...
Putting down some pavement in some buildings and... Putting down some pavement in some buildings and.
I do have kind of a, an example that shows a little bit of what the comparison was. Yeah, so I guess this is the existing conditions.
Let there be light.
And this will, you can kind of see a hashed area that's outlining all the driveways and the pavement that was, that will be removed as a part of this project. This is comparing the impervious and the pervious areas onsite. And then to show you the proposed conditions. Yep.
I'm having a little trouble getting oriented, I can't see south.
Sorry, there's a north arrow right up there in the top.
Got it, thank you, yeah.
The left side would be north. You can see the, the labels for 47th and 48th Street there.
Thank you, that helps, yeah.
So part of the existing parking lot that actually is just west of 48th Street would be getting removed as a piece of this as well. Then you're comparing all the, the square footages of the houses, the driveways. So we're, we're taking this total area that we're looking at. And then when you compare to the proposed, this is what we're taking into account of, again, the pervious and impervious areas. And so impervious area, obviously, it did increase as a part of this, but through some of those measures, we went through different, different stormwater runoff measurements to run a model to see what that increase was. And the increase was a small enough amount that it, it wasn't deemed needing to do anything at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions at this time? Councilman Washington?
Thank you, but I'm going to hold off.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
Good evening, my name is Alethea Stovall, Dean of Students at Bryan College of Health Sciences. Address is 1535 South 52nd Street. The impact of loneliness and social isolation in college students is significant, especially those who are beginning their first year in college. Many college students do not feel comfortable talking about or even admitting to their feelings of loneliness. In one survey conducted by the American College Health Association of nearly 48,000 college students, found that 67% of females and 54% of males had felt very lonely in the past 12 months. And only 20 students reported that they had never felt lonely at college. Causing loneliness and socialization has been linked to the pandemic, the impact of social media, and the shifting of our society values, values, excuse me, that are becoming more intrinsically motivated, a successful career, making more money, getting more followers and likes, rather than intrinsically motivated, being a good member of the community. We also know that our students are facing financial decisions that will have a lasting impact on their futures. Having access to moderately priced housing will help to prepare and alleviate the added stress on our students as most of our students prepare for a career in healthcare. The intergenerational community is a model program that will bring an added value to our students while pursuing their educational studies. The intergen project will allow students to meet new people, connect with senior residents, help to meet the needs of students who desire a home away from home experience while increasing awareness of healthcare and caring for our elders. It's a community where members learn valuable life skills, items that guide life outside of college, and even away from college, when you have graduate skills like cooperation, sustainability, and the impact of having a mentor-mentee relationship, all while connecting to our senior Tabitha members, our community subject matter experts. At Bryan College of Health Sciences, we are excited to be one of the first to explore this model in the United States. With Tabitha's genius idea of partnering two of our loneliest generations together, we are truly preparing our students for something more. Thank you for the opportunity to present and discuss the intergen program.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
My name is Richard Bagby. I'm here as a board member of the Witherby Neighborhood Association. I live at 389 South 47th Street in Lincoln. And I'm here in opposition to the project. When one looks at the project from the perspective inward-looking at Tabitha, towards Tabitha, within the business of Tabitha, within the Tabitha campus, this looks like an outstanding project. And we congratulate the team of Joyce and Christie and the team they've brought together on designing the project. We think a long-term, we can read the temperature of the planning commission and the city council. We have no expectation that our opposition to the project would prevent it from going forward. I am here to explain our continued opposition to the project and to give you a little perspective. Our statements for the planning, before the planning commission are a part of your packet. Our more recent updated statement was submitted to the council packet, and I won't bother to read those again. But I would like to provide some perspective. The Witherby Neighborhood Association exists to preserve and protect the quality of living within our, the area that we cover in the city of Lincoln, from Woods Park, 33rd Street to 56th, the first six blocks south of O, from Randolph to O, an area that encompasses about 4,000 residents of Lincoln and 1,700 households. In an increase of, the previous use of this land was just illustrated in the overhead shot, you saw nine single-family residence homes on these properties, all zoned R2, I believe one on the corner was R4. We fought very hard to rezone the entire neighborhood about a decade ago, 15 years ago perhaps, to R2. And in R2, nothing more than a duplex can be built. And only if the property is big enough. The residents in these nine properties would total, in a normal Witherby household, about 25, 20 to 25 people in these nine households in the previous use of this property. Tabitha gradually bought up all of these properties with future expansion of their campus in mind. The previously planned use of these properties, at, at the time the properties were torn down for that future use, that was to be single-story resident, expansion of nursing home function, single-story nursing home floors called greenhouses, two or three additional greenhouses between 20 and 30 residents in total. The current project has authorized up to 138 units, so it's be reasonable to expect a population of 150 to occupy this land that previously was occupied by 20. That increase in density is where our problem comes in. Now, you might ask, isn't this just a case of not in my backyard? Well, I would propose a slightly different perspective. This view from one of Tabitha's earlier brochures shows the project from the corner of 47th and L. That view is best understood as being approximately 20 feet above my home. This is the view from my home last weekend, from my front porch. So this is not a, a not in my backyard effort, this is literally my front yard. Looking at 165-foot wall across the street, literally across the street, with single-story residential family homes on three sides of the project. Tabitha's to the south, there are single-story residential homes on three sides, 48th Street, L Street, and 47th Street. Now, why, the, the increase in density is not what we expected when we approved the Tabitha initiative for the greenhouse projects and tearing down the nine homes who were, which were occupied by our neighbors. That said, Tabitha is also our neighbors. The residents who live there are our neighbors, and quite frankly, by the time this project is built, I might be one of the ones applying for those apartments.
Get the corner suite.
The increase in density is some, one of the things that we're interested in. Between 100, going from 20 residents to 150 is a 8% population, or a housing unit increase in the neighborhood. We are almost entirely single-family and duplexes. The largest multifamily building in the neighborhood in that area is a 12-plex. This project puts a 14-plex on every single one of those nine lots where the houses, pre, single-family homes previously existed. For that reason, we would oppose any similar project but for the involvement of Tabitha. Joyce and the team at Tabitha, Christie and the team at Tabitha have designed a superb project, and we support the project. We are here officially to oppose anything similar. We are throwing down a marker to future development in the neighborhood. The planning commission enthusiastically supported this project and said, we hope it becomes a model, not in my backyard. Tearing down single-family residential homes to put in 14 plexes on what was a single-family residential lot is not something we would support but for the involvement of Tabitha. It is an expansion of an outstanding existing business. It is in our neighborhood, they are our neighbors, we support Tabitha and their efforts, but we are throwing down a marker for future development. We do not want this to become a precedent for development within the neighborhood. There are 1,700 housing units currently in Witherby and 4,000 residents. A 8% increase in housing units in one single project is what we object to. There is almost no undeveloped property in the neighborhood, so something like this to come to our neighborhood again would again involve tearing down single-family residential homes. That is something we oppose, that was one of the founding reasons for the Witherby Neighborhood to come into, Witherby Neighborhood Association to come into existence, is to oppose oversized large apartment complexes. But for the involvement of Tabitha, we would oppose this with pitchforks and public meetings and petitions and news conferences. You're not seeing that. We oppose the project to throw down a marker and say this should not become a precedent. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Mr. Bagby at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much for coming out. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. Director Marvin or Mr. Willis, would you like to provide a rebuttal?
Thank you, I just wanted to just point out a couple of things, just to make sure. So again, while we're talking about 128 units and it definitely is increasing density, the special permit, I believe that area was like two 19 or 20-bed facilities, so there are already more than duplexes it would be, under the special permit that would be permitted there, that existing. So again, I know we're still increasing density, but again, that's, it's, this is already potentially more than nine single-family homes. Parts, and then, and more important, like future land use map of the comprehensive plan, now, I guess we just adopted a new comprehensive plan, so maybe I'm out of date, but, but at least an hour ago, it was, you know, designated future urban density, mixed-use, mixed-use area on this corner. So again, it fits in with the future land use still. This was designated for more, on, on this corner, more than single-family residential. So I just want to at least clarify that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Willis? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we have the applicant speak. We had a public hearing, and the applicant was able to close. So we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, and we will take action on this item on our next meeting, which would be December 6th.
Item 6C is Comprehensive Plan Compliance 21022, declaring approximately 1.06 acres of city-owned property generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of 16th and N Streets as surplus.
Good evening, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th, if you haven't remembered. Let me tell you a little bit about some of the process that you'll see coming forward, because this is really just, as we start talking about the Pershing Block, there will be a number of items that will come before this body. And rather than surprise you as we bring them up, I'll try to give you a clue as to some of the things directly related to the surplusing of this particular property. So what you see here is an L shape of the Pershing Block, and that is the area that is being identified as being surplus. The area that is white on this map, down to the curb line, would be not what is before you for surplus. Why is that? So when we originally advertised for an RFP or got response to a development on the Pershing Block, White Lotus had made a proposal to do a public-private partnership that would involve a library and private development. The area that is being surplus before you is the private development side of this. The area that is not hashed is the area that could potentially serve as a new future downtown library. So obviously, if it was going to be a new future downtown library, it's not going to be surplus, it's going to retain, be retained as city property. The reason we're doing this now is we would like to, as we are getting closer to an application that White Lotus is going to submit to NIFA for tax credits to be able to finance an affordable housing project, they need two things on top of this. They need an intent resolution, which would be this body issuing an intent resolution that you would support bonding, like you will be doing in next meeting for other projects, and would also like to have a purchase agreement so that they can demonstrate to NIFA in their application that they will have control of this particular property. So these three items together, the intent resolution, the surplusing, and a purchase agreement are key elements in their application for their tax credit project on the private sector side. I'll stop there and answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Director Marvin? Councilman Cho.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Marvin, thank you very much, that was really quite helpful. So they need a purchase agreement, we can't, we have to surplus it before we consider to make it eligible for a purpose agreement. And this is just an intent, correct?
So what we're, surplusing today would be the area, the footprint that could go on the private development. And subsequent to this, but certainly not this year, early next year, we would like to be able to work out those other two issues that will then get them in a position so that they can make an application to NIFA.
We have to take this step to get ready for those next two.
We have to take this step to get ready for those next two steps.
Yes, thank you.
Any further questions, Councilman McGinnis?
Just got a couple of technical questions. There is not a lot associated with this. Is this a meets and bounds description that we're...
Oh, Mr. Councilman McGinnis is getting crazy. Legal description.
No, there's not a lot, there, that block is just Block 34, I believe, in the downtown area conveyed to the city with the original plat of the city by, from the state of Nebraska, actually, a long time ago.
To the school district.
It was actually, it may have been ultimately conveyed to the city, but it was platted as, it was platted as part of the city, and there's, we can talk about that, there's a lot of fun things that go with this block, frankly.
You could go back, so...
What, 1850s? What we're surplusing, is it described in a meets and bounds?
I believe what the description before you is, and I guess I should introduce myself, Tim C., Assistant City Attorney, 555 South 10th. I believe it's described as, I believe it's the north 80 feet and the east 100 feet, or flip those two numbers of Block 34. And so, it's really designed to surplus a footprint or a block, a polygon, with the idea that eventually you'll have to replat this and create a lot that would be done prior to selling it, I would think, but for today's purposes, all we are declaring is that for this, the east 80 feet and the north 100 feet of Block 34 are declared surplus and no longer needed for public purposes by the city, that's essentially what we're deciding today.
Okay. Councilman Raybold?
Just to clarify, it says 1.06 acres.
I think that's a rough number, that's not a surveyed number or anything like that.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
That concludes our public hearing ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions. We can now move on to Section 7 and vote on our ordinances. Item 7A is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, prefixed by the letter W, by creating the classification of Diversity Equity and Inclusion Manager, introduced by McGinnis.
Introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by...
Trying to find that lot somewhere.
Beckius.
Lot 2 of subdivision.
And we're off on the second, everybody, this is a good thing.
Any further discussion, seeing none, please call a roll.
Who's second?
Beckius.
Okay.
With a Tom.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7B is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range A by creating the classification of Health Equity Initiatives Coordinator, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion, seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7C is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter C, by changing the pay range of Class 5305, Energy Recovery Coordinator from C32 to C30, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion, seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
One more time.
Item 7D is amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 2.76.175, Compensation Plan, Promotion Transfer, Demotion or Temporary Promotion to Designate a Promotion, Probationary Period for Unrepresented Employees Who Are Promoted and by adding a new section numbered 2.76.207 entitled Compensation Plan, Disaster Response Pay to Create Disaster Response Pay Due to Employees in Classifications That Were Previously Represented by LMCEA and Have Moved to the Unrepresented W Class, introduced by McGinnis.
I'm excited to move this.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Section 8 Resolutions, First Readings are Items 8A through 8I. Section 9 Ordances, First Reading, Related Resolutions, Item 9A. Pending List Date Certain, Items 10A, and Pending List, Item 11A.
Today is the Public Comment Session Night, session night. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda, and not planning to appear on agenda or on a future agenda, may do so at the open microphone session. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak, regardless of number of topics, which should be tonight. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Investigator Parker? Got anything on your mind, want to chat? Okay, perfect. Councilwoman Raybold?
I'd like to wish everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving and move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion, can you please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Happy...